Together here and to conduct the business of the citizens of Harrington. Father, we ask that you be with us as we conduct this business. We ask that you give us the wisdom, the courage, and the understanding of the situations, and maybe make decisions that are right for our community. And Father, we do remember those in not working out, particularly the family of those that were lost in that accident. You know that beyond anything that we can imagine, the hurt and sorrow in their hearts. Father, we ask that you just be with them, and we pray that they will look to you during these times, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Ayer?
Here.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Lee?
Yes.
Ken Mottet?
Yes.
Next item is vote to pay the salaries. I'd like to ask for a motion to include a caveat that says "with Christmas bonuses" this time, and if we can get a motion, then the second I can discuss it.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Holly, second by Councilman Best.
Councilman Holly.
Councilman Best. For those open free ones that had any questions, discussions, corrections, or amendments, please.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Lee?
Yes.
Ken Mottet?
Yes.
Next item is vote to pay the salaries. I'd like to ask for a motion to include a caveat that says "with Christmas bonuses" this time, and if we can get a motion, then the second I can discuss it.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright, second by Councilman Me. Councilman Wright, Councilman Me. I'd like to ask everyone to approve the Christmas bonuses this year. They are budgeted bonuses, and they will be the same as last year. Is that right, Dr. Curley? The floor is open for any discussion. Hold on, please.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Lee?
Yes.
Ken Mottet?
Very good.
Lonnie Ratt?
Yes, I think we... I speak for everyone, saying thank you to our employees. That's not very much, but it's a little bit. Hope it helps. Move on to delegations. If anyone in the audience would like to address council, you may do so at this time. If you would stand and state your name and try to limit your comments to three minutes to accommodate others that might like to speak.
Yes, sir. John Belinski with the Disabled American Veterans Post 86. As you know, I'm still in a quest for monies for a replacement van, but the suggestions from the community lead me to believe that there are entities within municipalities that might have monies available, and so someone suggested that Harriman Utilities or the Housing Authority may have something along those lines. And so I guess what I'm asking for is give me a name or someone to contact, otherwise I can cold call, and... But if you could point me in a direction, then I would be most appreciative.
I'm not an agent.
There's the Housing Authority, and then the HUB is on the front row. General, hang on a minute.
Oh, my goodness. Allow me.
Still under delegations, if anyone would like to address council.
Thank you, sir.
Is that it, Mr. Belinski? That help you?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir. Thank you.
Still under delegations. Move on to old business. Councilman Holly, do you have any old business?
Councilman Me.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Best?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayer?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Martin?
Does anybody know any more details about the reassessment that's coming up next year? It's the county assessor's office. Although I've read conflicting reports about... Anybody know any detail?
He'll be on the agenda next Tuesday to give us a presentation.
Mayor, I did have Mr. Morgan on TV news this evening, so he'll be replayed tonight at 11:10, if you want to watch that.
Okay.
He gave a six-minute detail of what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman... Just... This is not old business, but I just want to make an announcement. The city manager is not with us tonight. He is in the process of trying to get some stuff moved into his house. He just closed today, so we've got a new taxpayer in the city. That's one way to do it, I guess. Department reports, Dr. Curley.
I only have one thing. Each year, I'm supposed to, under the debt policy and the fund balance policy, go over those policies with you and give you an assessment of where we are. It's up to you whether you want to have them or not, and we can do them. But if it states in those policies, then I will review those policies once a year.
Next work, Dr. Curley.
Next work, Dr. Curley. Okay. That's all.
Okay. Department reports. Chief?
I have a chief. Mayor, all I've got is y'all got her monthly breakdown of the reports. Still working on the bowl of class. I know Angie sent out an email about that. It kind of fell through because some of the state instructors wasn't able to make it. I did have a meeting a day or four years ago with Laura Ponder of the Grand County Health Department and another state guy. So we're looking at some things and working through some contacts through the Pigeon Board Tire Department. What this will be, it'll just be like a general information type class of how it started, if something was to happen, how it's going to be handled, how my own wants to handle it. A hospital rep was actually at the L E P C meeting this morning, and he explained how they're handling procedures there. What we need to know, you know, is what's going to happen at our level here. There are certain PPE that's going to have to be acquired for this. I'm working now, trying to get it through the state at no cost to us. So if we never get this class together, you all know about it, it'll be a very informative class, and we're trying to get it everywhere. It may end up going in the next year before we have it, but it's... I mean, you know, is it going to happen? I don't know, but what I'm just trying to look at is make sure that we're ready for it here. And we still have openings for bell ringers.
Do y'all ring all the way up through Christmas Eve on that?
We're going to go to December 23rd.
Chief, get in here.
Mr., as you all know, we've been working hard on getting ready for this Christmas parade, and we have about 45 personnel out there working it, so directing traffic around the parade and also inside the parade. And I'm... Dot 22, we're being paid, so the rest of them are reserves and exploring and stuff like that, so we look pretty good. So hoping that this year, we're going to redirect some traffic this time around the parade, hoping to kind of beat the... Clog it up so much around Cudahy and Jordan over there so much, so hopefully this will work out this year that better. That's it.
Chief, is this a grand prize on your invitation?
You were a car? No, I ain't...
Yeah, no. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Committee reports. Yes. Yeah, sorry. HUB, I'm sorry. Go again.
Good to know we got another taxpayer on the road. He's also a utility rate payer. That's good, too. First, before I give you an update, I just want to say appreciate working with mayor and council this year. Appreciate your support. We've worked together on a lot of projects, and we've got a lot of things going on, a lot of positive things, and I think the working relationship, I hope it's the best that's been in a while, and we've worked hard to try to get that. On that note, we were working this week to repair some of the live strands on Temperance Building. I think they... Some of them had gotten cut during the moving project, whatever. If I was trying to hang on the side of that roof, I'd probably cut everything, too. But I think we got all those going. I do apologize for the flyer beds down there because it was either getting flyer beds or not fixing the lights, so may have a little bit of work to do on the flyer bed, but I think we've got everything going there. Just to update you on several of our projects, I'd say we've got a lot of things going on. Thankfully, about to wind up a few of these major projects. We have our CDBG water project. We've been doing the service connection repairs. We also, in order to utilize all those funds, we asked permission from CDBG to also replace two galvanized water lines. We have received that permission, so that will be done as well. CDBG folks were in week four last, I guess. Just a quick review of the records. Everything's in good shape. We'll still have that wrapped up in time for the city to make an application in February. So all that work will be done. That project's going pretty well. Our pump station rehab, we're down to the final inspection and the pumps. Some punch list items, we've got a couple of issues. And any project this size, y'all's got a few things got to be taken care of. We do have some money remaining in the SRF funds, and we purposely worked this project so that we would, because what we would like to do with that money and SRF has given permission to use that to purchase camera truck and equipment. As Mr. Holly knows, we've had that in the budget for several years. It's a pretty costly item, and we've just not been able to buy it out of our funds, but we'll be able to utilize it here, and it's going to be a tremendous help to us as well. Down in Midtown area, we had a line back up in the woods off of Dogwood Bryant Lane area, and we've been down there and putting, you know, poles roll, lines up in the woods where you can't get up to and repair it, so we've been bringing that out to the roadway with our crews, and that works pretty much completed down there, pull the line out of the woods and so forth. Ruhr Tan Road, you know, see what's going on out there. I think down toward the Hatchler Mill Road area, the contractor on the sewer has found much more rock than he might have anticipated. I don't think he planned on being there and having that section closed as long as it has been, but, you know, they're working away on it. I met with our inspector out there today, and, you know, things are going well. We've got the poles for the electric rehab portion. I thought they were going to probably start this week. Looks like it may be another week or two, but really, that part of the project's not going to be that big of a deal, you know, to set those over. It's not like the underground facilities. And a final thing I mentioned to you before about completing this loop down in Midtown with our gas line, and kind of running the situation down. It's down on Bluff Road, and if you travel Bluff Road back there, you know, there's a pretty good section where there's no shoulder on either side. And in talking to Mr. Ferguson, you know, about, obviously, we wanted to dig in the road, they've just repaved several sections of that, so what we have done is we are in process contracting with Bergers, who's basically going to do a bore installation. They will have to, in a couple of sections, get up in the bank on the side of the road. Shouldn't really be an issue when we get that loop completed. It's kind of like your extremities, you know, when it gets cold, you know, the ends of your fingers and your toes get cold first. When we get this gas out there at the end of your line, you don't have things looped together. That's what happens. Pressure declines. This is going to help us tremendously. And since we're on the other end of Bluff Road, as Mr. Holly knows, one of these days we'll connect all that through there, pick up some more customers. So that's what I have. Any questions? Thank you.
I would say thanks for helping us on the Temperance Building. That was... You all did a lot of work on it last year, and the LED lights, we thought were going to be low maintenance, and they will be, but they got cut this year, so thanks for helping us out on that.
On that project, you said you had to post the lighting. Are we putting the old lighting back up, or are we going with LED lighting on this new project?
Which one?
Is there going to be lighting on it on Ridge and Ridge?
Oh, yeah. No, it'll be... It'll be new lighting.
Will it be the LED lighting?
Yeah. Yeah. It'll be new lighting.
Anybody else have any questions? Still under committee... Now we're going to committee reports.
Yes, the parade Thursday night, December 4th. Lineup is at 6:00 PM. Parade starts at 7:00. As chief said, they're ready to go. The fire department's ready to go, and the street department's going to sweep in there after and get it cleaned up.
Come on out.
First item on the agenda is discuss a possibly approved golf course using surplus auction money for tarp extensions. You know, a couple, three years ago, we replaced the greens out there, and thank goodness the golf course raised the money and bought tarps. Because of the winter that we had last year, it got so cold that... Well, let me start by saying this. The tarps wouldn't cover the whole greens. They left a few feet around the edges, and it got so cold last year that everything that wasn't covered died. I know Rockwood had a hard time with their... I think they may have lost all their greens, didn't have any tarps. So thankfully, we had tarps, but the tarps, we need... They needed to be a little bit bigger, so they priced some extensions, and do you remember the cost?
Somewhere around $2,000.
It was about the same as, I think, the surplus equipment. You want to go... You know more than me.
Well, the surplus equipment will cover all, but I think a couple hundred dollars, and they're going to look to see if I move them from some from one account, whether it's some maintenance or something, to cover the other $200.
Someone received $139.
From the auction?
Golf course, but there may be others coming in. I don't know. Come from a girl deal?
It's been, what, $1,800 or something?
He said, yeah, 16, 1800, 1700, something like that.
Most people were coming in there.
Maybe the people that bought didn't pay. They didn't pick up.
Most of the stuff, I think, were... There was only one or two things left that hadn't been picked up. They'd already... They'd scheduled the time to pick up. It might be picked up by now.
Either one of you all know how long it takes to get payment in from girl deals?
It just depends sometimes if people pay with a credit card or... It was our first time dealing with the excellent girl deals, dealing with the money itself, and so the reason we did that is because they take care of the credit cards part of it, too. So we got $2900, and we're supposed to get toward about $600, so it's going to come in as it comes. But I'm sure it can't take them. It should be within the...
Either way, they're asking for permission for that money to be redirected back towards them so that they can use that instead of going back to the general fund to buy the tarp extensions.
Actually, technically, any time you sell equipment, it goes back into the general fund. Basically, what you are doing is revising their budget. Most of the equipment we sell through auction, because the city buys it, the money goes back into the general fund.
Right. Yeah, but they're asking for that money to be given back to them.
Well, what you're doing are upping the budget.
You're upping their budget on their revenue and their expenditure, so it's a wash. It's just a wash. It's money in, money out.
Hip it off.
Motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Holly. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Me. Councilman Holly?
Councilman Me.
The floor is open for question or discussion.
What kind of tarp is it? Is it some kind of special tart?
Yeah.
And all these funds is coming from surplus items from the golf course?
Not the other tarps?
No, theirs is separate on what we're...
No, it's all separate out. We know what one of them goes where.
And they do have a few other things they wanted to add to the next time they do it, so of course that'll come in and go to general fund.
And when would they make these purchases?
Well, considering that they're going to have to have them here in about a month, it needs to happen... They need to start the process this month. It might be January before they get them, the new tarps, and that's everything. That's the labor, material, and everything that's... They have to quote them.
So we're going to front the money in the reverse?
No. Well, no, the money doesn't come in. If they're... The surplus money is... If the surplus money is... Doesn't come in, then they can't... There's nothing to... There's nothing there, unless you all decide to front them somewhere. The assumption is that the money was here. I'm going to go out to call check on that, get one off Curley.
It may be coming, I don't know, but that's the only check I received. It was a girl deal, $39.
Still under discussion?
Well, what I was intending to say on that is we sell things at auction all the time, and we don't normally give that back to the department from which it came from. So even though it is a wash, it's still an increase in our budget, and we don't normally allocate funds from equipment sales at auction to any particular part, but you can do that. That's the only point.
Well, yeah, they all fully understand that. It's just maybe the tarp extensions and that was money that, you know, I thought they'd really used. That's why... That's the only reason they requested that.
And we have a risk of damage in those, huh?
Well, you save more green, so you won't be losing part of the green where it's... Of course, you want the bigger greens to help the course out, and then as... But what they were doing, we were able to get... Actually, when we approved getting the greens, we were actually able to get a little bit more than... They gave us a little bit more than what we had asked for, and so our greens are... We got a little bit more than what we paid for, so that worked out good for us, because the tarps were ordered for the size of greens we got. And then, you know, then you'll have it if you don't have the green... You don't have the park covering it, you might have that two-foot section that dies out on you and then grass again. So that's why you want the extension, so you can go right from the plain to the green.
And it costs us more to replace it. If what we lost in these tarps, right?
Yeah, because if not, you'll be playing on... You'll have that... Like I said, you'll have bare spots for two or three foot going in the...
All the way around it?
Yeah.
From what I saw.
Now, you might be able to pull a little bit more on one side, but it could be a...
I just take this, you know, we spent, what, $35,000, $45,000 on greens for $2,000 on tarps. Lose those, you know, lose some more greens.
Yeah, and we... If we hadn't bought those tarps, we wouldn't have had the greens. I mean, it would have been off for nothing if there'd been those tarps in.
Well, of course, I hear what Charles is telling us, and we just need to understand that we're making exceptions, really.
Any more discussion? Call over.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Lee?
Yes.
Ken Mottet?
Yes.
Lonnie Ratt?
Yes. Discuss the possibly approved changes to railroad leases. This is something that Kevin has actually been working with the railroad on. We did a little bit of this last year with this partial behind the building that we're in, and they have since approached us and are wanting to revise the terms of the leases that we have in other places. In your packet, you have the City Park partial. This partial that is referencing is... It runs along the railroad track and has the fence sitting on it that separates the park from this Christmas lumber property. The proposed effective date for the new cost would be January 1st, 2016. It'd be $600 a year for that lease. That's up from $100 a year that was set in 1996. Second one is the ball field that the high school plays on. We propose to change that effective June 1st, 2015, and the price is $1,320 a year. That's up from $500 a year in 2007.
How long does it last for?
I don't know. It's year to year, I think, and that's why there's some inconsistencies in the way it is. One was redone in '85, and then 2007 and 1996, they're inconsistent. The one we did last year, of course, was 2013. I think it's as they come across them, I don't know. It's just a year to year lease.
If they're like ours, they renew.
They renew annually?
Yeah. We have to pay them four, five a year.
Is this where the ball fields actually sit, or just parking here?
The way it looks is the way it's where it sits, that what's in between the fences.
So I don't know that we're paying a lease on the parking. I think we're managing to use on that because it's actually in the shape of what's in the fence.
Kevin?
Yes, all other things in the... Are... Would stay the same. All the other terms will stay the same.
Do they pay taxes on these parks?
Before I ask Dr. Curley... Dr. Curley, you know, they do pay a type of people who are taxed, I think, who would stay.
Yeah, utilities and transportation are assessed by the state of Tennessee, and those assessments come later on after our profit tax assessments are already in, and then we have those... They send the materials to us, and they pay their taxes that are led by the state. Altogether, we get about $60,000 a year from all utilities and railroads and various other types of things like, I guess, some of these towers and other things under assessment state.
Is this paid out of the rec...
Pardon?
Is this paid for out of recreation budget?
What's that?
The... License.
I haven't seen it.
What's the lease on the ball field?
Yeah, whatever we pay. We don't have a specific line on the rec budget, so it's going to come out of the rec budget.
Someone think we'd be raising their budget $1,320 a year?
Or however you like to account for it. We could freeze it. We could just freeze it.
We can handle it in the contracts. Let me go.
We're going to try to keep doing it, unless we don't want the ball fields. Pardon?
There's not much... Yeah, I mean, there's not much negotiation, really. Do you need a motion? Yeah. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Best, and second by Councilman Ayer to accept the proposed changes for Norfolk Southern Railroad leases that are included in the packet. Councilman Best?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayer?
Yes, sir.
The floor is open for question or discussion.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Lee?
Yes.
Ken Mottet?
Yes.
Lonnie Ratt?
Yes. Also included in everybody's packet is a copy of an agreement from CGI Communications. This, too, is something that Kevin has been working on to try to better market our city without any cost to us. I did not sit through the presentation, but Angie did sit through the presentation, so can you explain exactly what this is?
This company will come in and do four videos. They'll produce four videos for the city of Harrington for free, and they will publish it on our website. And what they'll do is they'll go out to different organizations within the community and see about marketing, putting marketing advertisements on and around the videos that's on our website. And it just tries to help promote the city and promote their organizations, and if no one signs up with them, it still is not going to cost us enough.
So what do they get out of it?
They get money through the organizations that are around here to try to promote their business. That's what they're doing.
It's a video version of the calendar.
It looks pretty neat. Kevin actually worked with this company when he worked for Fayetteville, the city of Fayetteville, and they do great quality, good work.
And there's no way we'll get obligated?
No.
Who does our cityharrington.net that they work with, some side where the link goes, predominantly located?
Well, we're going to try to integrate the .net site and the .org site before we actually do this, because it actually takes 10 to 14 weeks to actually produce the videos. Kenny and I are working together. We're going to try... And Kevin, we're going to try to... Um, Kenny and I are working together. We're going to try, and Kevin, we're going to try to integrate those two sites, so we'll just have one site, and I think we're going to keep the dot org site rather than the dot net.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agreement by C S G I Communications, and second by Councilman Ayer, uh, Councilman Best?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Ayer?
Uh, I'm excited that we have the opportunity to do this. I think, uh, you know, I'd like to see us improve our website tremendously and have these prominently displayed on.
Floor's open. I think you may see other cities do the same thing. Um, I think it's a pretty neat deal, too. Call the wrong person.
Chris Ayer?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenny and me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Ratt?
Yes.
And don't forget Thursday at seven o'clock is the, uh, Christmas parade, December the fourth. Also, don't forget, it's Christmas time. Shop your local businesses, shop Hehraman, shop Rock County. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?